Roll call.
Palermo, Brennan, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton. Mr. President.
Here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for opening remarks by Councilmember Brinker Harding.
Good afternoon and welcome to today's city council meeting. The mask I'm wearing has Mickey Mouse on it in case you can't see in the back. And the reason I'm wearing it is, four years ago when I was first running for city council, my opponent was Dwight Peterson. And Dwight served the state of Nebraska as, in the Unicameral, for many years and then was on the learning community. Anyway, over the course of our campaign, we actually, we became buddies. And we even said, whoever won, we'd invite the other to the inauguration, which after I won, I invited Dwight. He took me up on it. And anyway, over the years, we just became friends. So Dwight passed away just about two weeks ago. And I went to the funeral and his family, Dwight was a huge fan of Mickey Mouse. He had, I think he even had a tattoo of Mickey Mouse and wore Mickey Mouse ties and just a huge fan. And so his family, when they came in for the funeral, all had these masks on. And I said to Michaela, one of his daughters, I said, you know, that was really kind of a nice touch. If you have an extra one of those, I have opening comments at council next week. I'd like to say a few words about Dwight. And in his memory, I'll wear one of his Mickey Mouse masks. And Michaela said, I'll do you one better. She said, how many council members are there? And I said, there are seven of us. So the county board this morning did a proclamation for Dwight, which is very respectful and honorable. But I think maybe one step better that I'm going to ask our council members if they would indulge me to, I got each a Mickey Mouse mask. So in honor of Senator Dwight Peterson, if you care, wear a Mickey Mouse mask for the meeting. And I'm sure Dwight would be very touched.
Thank you, Councilmember Harding. And as someone who knew Dwight very well, and your comments really, really provide good insight into what the character of the man. Us in the courthouse knew Dwight as someone who had an indelible spirit of optimism and belief that anyone who wanted to get sober, he'd work with you to try to get sober. And he touched the lives in a positive way of countless people in Omaha. Not always as fast, I think, as some prosecutors would have hoped for, but he never gave up on anybody. So thank you, Councilmember Harding. Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to this meeting of the Omaha City Council. We thank you for joining us. As a courtesy to those in attendance and to facilitate the conduct of our business, we ask that you please silence or turn off all electronic devices. Madam Clerk.
And real quick, an affidavit. A publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Without objection, I'm going to move item 13 to the end of the docket. So ordered.
Items six and seven relate to the same project and can be considered together for Omaha Box Building Subdivision located south of 21st Street and Avenue J. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item six, a resolution to approve the final plat for Omaha Box Building Subdivision. Item seven, a resolution to approve the Omaha Box Building Subdivision Agreement.
The public hearing on items six and seven begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Thank you, Mr. President. Brent Beller, 1140 West Center Road, on behalf of the project applicant, Flat Rock Group LLC. This is a long time coming to get this project going. Great project, lots of new jobs, reuse of an old building down near the airport, 200,000 square feet. But with that, excited to get to this point and here for any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Palermo, Brennan, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Items six and seven are approved, seven to zero. Items eight through 10 can be considered together for property located northwest of 33rd and Jones Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item eight, an ordinance to rezone this property from R-7 district to TOD2 MUR district. Item nine, an ordinance to approve a PUR overlay district and a TOD2 MUR district. Item 10, an ordinance to repeal the ACI2 overlay district.
Eight through 10, right? The public hearing on items eight through 10 begin at this time. Are there any proponents?
Thank you, Mr. President. Brent Beller, 1140 West Center Road, on behalf of the project applicant, 33 Jones LLC. You may remember this project, back in January, we were here, we had a healthy debate about TIF for this project. This is a new development on the corner of 33rd and Jones. Exciting for the city in that I believe this is the first TOD zoning that the city will be implementing if you all approve. But just a quick rehash, 55 market rate apartments, 47 one-bed, or eight two-bed. Again, utilizing TOD zoning, we're pretty excited to get going on this. We think it'll be a great redevelopment for this area. And with that, we're here for any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. This is, I do believe you are correct, the first TOD overlay project. And if you believe in a sustainable Omaha, if you believe in projects that can increase the density to provide a lower cost of services per mile delivered by your city government so that we can have a variety of different intensity of uses that people throughout our city enjoy, we need density like this in redevelopment in our urban core. And this is an example of one in very close proximity to mass transit routes. And it'll be a good project, so I'm pleased to support it. Roll call.
Palermo, Brennan, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Items 11 and 12 can be considered together for property located northwest of Farnham and Beverly Drives. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 11, an ordinance to rezone this property from CC district to TOD2 MX district. Item 12, an ordinance to rescind the ACI2 overlay district.
The public hearing on items 11 and 12 begin at this time. Are there any proponents?
Yes, Randy Kuchak, 14710 West Dodge Road with Lampard Airson, here on behalf of the applicant, OVODEV LLC. I'm here and happy to answer any questions you may have about the project.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? I see you back there. You're going to be quiet today, I guess. There she is. Welcome, Julie.
Hi, Julie Stavnek, J Development, 5205 California Street. And we're here to redevelop the project and we're appreciative of all the work that we've been, the partnerships that we've had with the city in the past. And thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Palermo, Brennan, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 14, a resolution to approve the 77th and Dodge Street Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan for Phase One located south of 77th and Dodge Streets and to the west of Rose Blumkin Drive in an amount up to $2,013,355.
The public hearing on item 14 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
(inaudible) City Planning. Before you is a redevelopment project that proposes a two-phased redevelopment. Phase one is what you see highlighted, shaded in blue, here on the, I think you can see it. So here is Dodge Street to help orient you, Dodge Street here, 72nd Street is here, and this is Rose Blumkin Drive. And so this blue shaded area is phase one, about 7 acres, which is the subject site of this particular redevelopment project plan. A potential for phase one, what is proposed is site reconfiguration, which would involve some relocation of these outdoor stored units, as well as some new construction of commercial uses. A potential phase two, which would be in this particular area, would be for future housing. This particular redevelopment, again, highlighted and shaded in the blue, makes complete use of the TIF for only public infrastructure work, ACI landscaping requirements, site preparation, and architectural and engineering fees. Some of the public infrastructure work will include public street expansion. So this area will receive a new, almost a new street grid. There will be new streets added. This is, I believe, Douglas Street, and this is Harney Street, which will better connect to the Rose Blumkin Drive. Storm sewer extensions, sanitary service, outfall relocation, sanitary sewer, 60-inch main relocation, sidewalk expansions, as well as ACI2 landscaping. Also proposed, as mentioned earlier, there's new construction of commercial structures. So this structure here would be a proposed 80,000-square-foot structure for floor and decor, retail services, and warehousing. This would be a new-to-market retail service. And then here are two additional lots that are proposed for quick service and/or retail services. This project anticipates 55 new full and part-time jobs while retaining about 15 jobs. It proposes the use of just over 2 million in TIF, which is approximately 15% of the capital stack, for a project investment of approximately 13.6 million. It complies with the master plan by providing a dense network of street systems through street connections and extensions at Farnham Street, as well as along 77th Street. It has received TIF committee approval and Planning Board recommendation for approval. There will be a final plat that will come back before you for this project in the coming weeks. The attorney representing the owner, 121 Acquisition Company, is here. And with that, I'd ask for your approval.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents?
I'll leave this up. Here's a rendering of the floor and decor site.
Thank you, Mr. President. Last time. Brent Beller, 1140 West Center Road, on behalf of the applicant, 121 Acquisition Company. Thank you, Bridget. I wanted to highlight just a couple of things because with every TIF project, I always want to make sure that when, at least when I'm presenting, we always specify the benefits as TIF as an incentive for our city and how it helps projects like this and other projects grow. So as Bridget alluded to, there's $12.5 million of what we traditionally call TIF-eligible expenditures. Of that 12.5, there's $2.6 million of true public infrastructure. These are improvements that we have to install to make a project like this feasible, of which we're only asking for $2 million of TIF to offset those public improvements. But for example, there is a 60-inch sanitary sewer that actually dissects this property. That sanitary sewer alone costs $1.2 million. So to make this all feasible, we're actually relocating that sewer line to the west. There's $700,000 of grade we have to bring in to bring this site out of the flood fringe. There's $150,000 of water utility extensions. There's $250,000 of storm sewer extensions. That's not even touching, as Bridget alluded to, the street grid that the developer's paying for privately. So I only mention that because oftentimes, TIF comes under fire for just a lot of misnomers. But here is a project that checks every single box, and it's why we have TIF and it's why it's a valuable tool for our city and our state alike. So with that, here for any questions as well. We appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Palermo, Brennan, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 15, a resolution to approve the 27 Leavenworth Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan for the location as listed on the agenda in an amount up to $1,877,712.
The public hearing on item 15 begins at this time. Mr. Seaton, is this the affordable housing?
Yes, good afternoon. Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning, behalf of the project, 27 Leavenworth Apartments. The site is an assembly age of four parcels on Leavenworth. See the freeway here, Leavenworth is a couple blocks east. It's a site that's probably most famous for a food truck that apparently is very popular. This is an affordable housing project. New construction, five stories, 134 units, be about 86 parking stalls. Developer is Nearage Agarwal. We have a rendering of the project. This one will also be looking for TOD zoning. There are design requirements to go with TOD. So what you're seeing here is a concept plan. The final product will probably appear a little different. But they're working with our urban design team. Project investment is a little more than 26 million. They're asking for $1,877,712 in TIF support, and we ask for your approval.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Glad you're here, Mr. Agarwal. Welcome.
Thank you. Nearag Wal, or the developer and owner, 3814 Farnham Street, Omaha, Nebraska. So as you know, this is an affordable housing project, and we're personally excited at having done a fair amount of affordable housing in Omaha. We're looking forward to do one of the few ones you'll see in the midtown and downtown core area, and our goal is kind of going forward to do a lot more in the urban core. We think there's a big need for affordable housing in centrally-located areas like downtown and midtown Omaha. What you see here, and we actually do have updated rendering, where we've added additional brick, as Don mentioned, there are design requirements based on location. So the goal here is to, of course, comply with ACI requirements, and we did receive feedback from the city recently. So our team at BVH is working with the city to respond to comments on exterior materials, parking, bicycle requirements. I mean, given this is affordable housing, there's always an uphill battle to meet exterior design requirements, but we're fully committed to making sure that the project looks more in line with a standard market rate project. It's really a mix of 134 units, one and two bedrooms, with garage parking and surface parking close to one-to-one, which is always our goal when it comes to urban environment. But the goal candidly is to push forward with financing entitlements and start construction, ideally in October. We're anticipating approximately 16 months to complete construction. But again, we're, I guess, excited to finally be doing an affordable housing project in midtown Omaha. After doing a lot of market rate projects in the Blackstone, it's nice to switch it up and add something that's a bit more affordable and in line with low to moderate income needs, for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Councilmember Festerson, you're recognized.
Mr. Agarwal, just a couple of questions for you. I'm supportive of this project, of course, and pleased to see it. As I've talked about from this diocese before, the planning committee of the city councils looking into our options on tax increment financing policy to encourage more projects like this, either to incent or require. And I think what we're finding is we do, we are able to do that, and we do have a lot of potential options to pursue in that respect. And there may be other city financing that's part of that picture, too, to help encourage products like this throughout the city. And looking at your project, so it's 134 units, all affordable, and although we have had a number of projects recently that have a portion affordable, I don't recall one recently that's entirely affordable housing, so I commend you on that. And looking at your capital stack, there's TIF, of course, but a much larger component of your capital financing is actually the low-income tax credit, right?
Correct, yeah, absolutely.
And that's what makes a project like this possible, it seems to me, by looking at your finances, an accurate statement?
Yeah, absolutely. And I mean, that's one thing we're proud of. We're bringing in basically outside money, federal dollars, and out-of-state partners, typically from, you know, east coast and west coast, investing in Nebraska. So I think that's a big plus for the city.
And you see that source as a viable source for future projects as well?
Absolutely. I think, I mean, candidly, with recent changes in federal law, there was actually a beneficial change, increasing the amount of tax credit that we get for projects. So I think you'll be seeing a lot more affordable housing and a higher-end affordable housing because it allows us to develop, I guess, affordable housing that looks more market rate and aesthetic.
And what you're charging, it appears to me, does meet the HUD guidelines. In fact, it probably has to, based on that program, which I think is about $750 a month per single and $950 for double.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, good. We look forward to engaging you on this project, but also this future discussion about how we can encourage these things with all developers in the community.
Absolutely. Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Festerson. Councilmember Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, too. My comments or questions are similar to Mr. Festerson's because we've had this discussion at our planning committee level and talk about the difficulty really in kind of putting these together. So if you could maybe just take a little deeper dive into the, maybe the difficulty or the hurdles involved with putting some of the capital, those capital stack components together to get a project to this point.
Absolutely. Yeah, I think really the difficulty we've seen over the last, you know, five or so years where we've done a couple hundred units of affordable housing is always kind of those gap financing mechanisms. So I think TIF is a good one. TIF, when we're able to couple with PACE, works very well. But I think it's really, I mean, looking to see kind of what can we do at a city level and a state level to add more potentially, I guess, state credits or city credits that can fill in that gap. And candidly, like Spark, CDF buys like that are helping, even a half-a-million-dollar kind of short-term grant or low-interest loan is helpful. Anything that really adds to the capital stack so we can invest more in the design and result in something that looks more like a market rate project rather than something that clearly screams light tech or affordable housing. So really, any kind of small grants or short-term loans are always helpful. So I think that's something we're hoping to kind of work with stakeholders in the community to see if we can start filling in those gaps in the future.
Can you talk about maybe some of the timing constraints as those funds may or may not be available?
Yeah, absolutely. So I mean, with a light tech project like this, there's so many items in the capital stack, it's always tricky to kind of line them up perfectly. So for us, it's making sure, you know, we have the TIF approval and the PACE approval done in a timely manner, but also the taxes and bond financing, the federal low-income housing tax credits. Really, those are, you know, anywhere from six to 12 months to set up. And then when we have things like, you know, construction pricing increasing, it requires us to be vigilant with costs as well. But it's basically really a juggling act with us. But really, the bond financing is probably the main one, and it takes a long time, as well as the tax credit financing to put together.
Okay. Thank you for explaining that. And I think that's one of the challenges, at least, that we found at the planning committee is knowing the difficulty in putting all those components together. If there's a way that we can kind of find, whether it's through incentives or maybe timing or ease of access to some of those funds or capital opportunities, is something that we're going to have to work for, we're going to have to continue to work on so that we can have more projects like this. Because we do have, we certainly do have a shortage of affordable housing in Omaha, and we need to find an impactful way to make a dent in that. So thank you for this project.
Absolutely. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Harding. Councilmember Gray, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nearage, sometimes I think you make this look easier than it really is. The project that we did on 30th and Fort, the nightmares that we had before we got that going, the one near 60th and Sorensen, that, I don't know if you guys are going to have a heart attack before we got that thing done. But I want to thank you, first of all, for being forward-thinking enough to recognize the need for affordable housing and more than recognize it to do something about it. And you've certainly done a wonderful job in District Two with some of the projects that you've done, hoping that you'll do some more. But, you know, I want to thank you for it. But the other thing, as Councilmember Harding, he wanted you to lay that out for you and lay it out for you, the difficulties that we face. And they're certainly there, but for our listening audience, you know, you made it look, you made it sound a little easier than it is. It takes a huge effort to get these kinds of things done. But what you've done and the questions that Councilmember Festerson and Councilmember Harding asked you were important questions for us to consider as we move forward in terms of addressing affordable housing the way we really need to. We really need to be intentional about it, and we really need to provide the tools necessary to make it happen. So for this project and all the others that you've done in Omaha, and hopefully you'll do some more in District Two, thank you, my brother. Appreciate it.
Absolutely. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. I would just add that this is a project that has been years in the making, literally years in the making. And it's not by happenstance that the person standing before us, as the leader of the project team, is seeing this to fruition because there are many others of faint of heart that would have walked away from this project. But there's some other people who have had important steps in looking at the city's policies and changing attitudes in terms of what can we do to address practical solutions to removing unnecessary and overly regulative city policies. And this council, a number of years ago, passed unanimously a resolution asking the planning department, who took the project on with open arms and said, we will look at the future land use map, we will look at these things. And he's sitting in the back of the room back there, but Mr. Dave Fanslaw, our planning director, has opened arms to the idea that we can and should be doing more to address the affordable housing need, that looking at the area immediately west of the central business district of the downtown quarter and as the emerging terrain that it has the potential to transform to on a mass transit route with bike route, I mean, close to schools, close to major employment centers. We have taken a site that had prohibitive parking requirements that would have killed this project and prevented it from coming to fruition. And now through recognizing the power of mass transit, walkability, bikability, and adjusting our expectations and our regulations can allow something like this to happen. And I just want to thank Mr. Fanslaw and his department, your team, and in fact, the mayor, for also being willing to be open to these things and support them. And that's why we're here today. And that's why you can now have more projects like this coming at the level and density proposed, and hopefully soon. So thank you.
Thank you.
What's the pleasure of the council? Yes, Councilmember Harding.
Thank you, and I apologize. The most important question probably along this line is something that Don Seaton brought up, and it is that taco truck. So it is very popular down there, I know. So hopefully you find a spot.
We'll find a good home for it. Maybe closer to City Hall, actually.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion to second.
Palermo, Brennan, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 16, to consider a Class C liquor license application for cheeseburgers located at 6610 South 168th Street, Suite 10, ease communication and support.
The public hearing on item number 16 begins at this time. We have Mr. Kelly registered for the applicant.
Mr. President, members of the council, Mike Kelly, 2804 South 87th Avenue. This is a new restaurant, West Omaha. We're here for any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Rule seven, right? Is there a second? Roll call.
Palermo, Brennan, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
That was in the motion. Your motion to approve included waiver of the rule seven, and it passed, so there's no need to do a secondary motion.
Item 17, to consider a Class C K liquor license application for the Farnham Hotel located at 1299 Farnham Street.
The public hearing on item 17 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Yes, good evening, or good afternoon, Michael Sands, 1700 Farnham Street, on behalf of the applicant. This is kind of the culmination of a long- This is kind of the culmination of a long road of three-plus years since we first came before you for the landmark building project and the rehabilitation that's gone along with that. My client is really excited to open. They plan to open sometime next month, hopefully. The manager of the hotel facility, which is what this application covers, Tony Moody, is with me today, and either of us are happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Sands.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming, Mr. Moody. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Including waiver of rule seven in your motion? Same with the second? Roll call.
Palermo, Brennan, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item 18 to consider a Class C liquor license for Javi's Taco located at 2559 South 171st Court, Bay 2559, A's Communication from the Planning Department regarding permits for the outdoor area.
The public hearing on item 18 begins at this time. We have Mr. Kelly registered for the applicant. Mr. Kelly.
Mr. President, members of the council, Mike Kelly, 2804 South 87th Avenue. This is another new restaurant in West Omaha, and this one will also rival the Taco Truck.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. With contingent upon permits? Roll call.
Palermo, Brennan, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item 19 to consider a Class C liquor license application for Richie's Bar located at 15244 West Maple Road.
The public hearing on item 19 begins at this time. We have David Kressel, the applicant, by video. Mr. Kressel.
I'm David Kressel at Richie's Bar, 15244 West Maple Road. Just wanted to be available to answer any questions that you guys might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Palermo, Brennan, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item 20 to consider a Class I liquor license application for Tasty Pizza located at 1418 South 60th Street, A's Communications and Support.
The public hearing on item 20 begins at this time. We have Mr. Daley registered for the applicant. Mr. Daley, you're recognized.
Hi there. I'm Bob Daley. I'm the attorney for the restaurant owner. This is Mary Joseph right here. My address is 1601 Dodd Street. And Mary Joseph is, what's your address, Mary?
1418 South 60th Street.
Thank you, Mary. You're not having enough fun with the original one on Leavenworth. You just want to have two now, right? Twice the fun?
We needed a little competition, so anyway. So we have a pizza restaurant, and I would like to apply for a liquor license. We want to sell beer and wine only. And there's two other restaurants next to me. They both have liquor licenses. And that's about it. I don't know what other information you need.
Well, we'll let you know if we need any. Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Second, and I would just note, I did get one email of concern from a neighbor. But if you understand this business operation and what the intended use and sale is for what she's doing, I don't believe those concerns are well-sounded. And I'm pleased to support this if there's a motion. Roll call.
Yep, Palermo, Brennan, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Items 21 and 22 can be considered together for liquor license addition applications. First Watch Center located at 2865 South 168th Street to add an outdoor area approximately 28 feet by 9 feet. And First Watch Maple located at 3605 North 147th Street, Suite 108, to add an outdoor area approximately 48 feet by 10 feet. A's Communication from the Planning Department regarding permits for the outdoor areas.
The public hearing on item 21 and 22 begin at this time. Are there any proponents?
Dan Cavan, 17547 Patrick Ave, here if you have any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Councilmember Brennan, you're recognized.
First Watch is one of my favorite places to go for breakfast. My kids, you know, go there on a regular basis. And so, good luck to you.
Thank you.
We have a motion, a second. Roll call.
Palermo, Brennan, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item 23 to consider a liquor license addition application for Infusion Brewing Company located at 6271 South 118th Street to add an outdoor area approximately 20 feet by 30 feet. A's Communication from the Planning Department regarding permits for the outdoor area, B's Communications and Opposition.
The public hearing on item 23 begins at this time. Welcome, Mr. Barberick.
Hello. William Biburick, 7905 South 45th Avenue, here as owner of Infusion Brewing Company.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Palermo, Brennan, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Thank you.
Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
Are there any removed?
No.
The public hearings on items 24 through 31 were held on March 16, 2021. Roll call.
Palermo, Brennan, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Any resolutions removed?
No.
The public hearings on agenda items 32 through 58 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or opponent. Anyone else in the chamber before I go to the video? Okay, we'll go to Douglas Rhodes on item 32. Mr. Rhodes, I presume you're available to answer any questions?
Yes, Doug Rhodes, 8654 Westers Drive, managing partner for Longhorn Steakhouse.
Thank you. Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Palermo, Brennan, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item 59, an ordinance to acquire private property for the North Downtown Riverfront Pedestrian Connector Project.
The public hearing on item 59 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed.
Item 60, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of a purchase order to 3M Company for supplies to be utilized by the Traffic Division.
The public hearing on item 60 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed.
Item 61, an ordinance establishing the South Omaha Business Improvement District.
The public hearing on item 61 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Come on down.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. My name is George Huffaker. I reside at 5026 South 23rd Street. I believe I'm a proponent for this ordinance in behalf that I've been a resident adjoining the South Omaha Business District for over 40 years. I do have a few issues. I know 24th Street is quite beautiful. I've been very happy with the past few years of some improvements and things down there. But I know we're looking for apparently ability to have special assessments for certain projects down there. And I'd like to make sure that some of the projects cover some of the issues that I suffer from adjoining commercial property. I'm viewing from my yard down along this back corridor of 24th Street. I have to police my yard every day. And yet, I'm lucky if I get once a year to keep up with this. I do my best to clean up what I can, but you can see this is not my trash. And so I'd like to make sure that if there's any special assessments or things that go along, or special projects, that we kind of take the time to look on the backside of this corridor. I'll also show here some good South Omaha improvement. But I kind of feel this is probably this flat work cement been done probably without a permit. I say that because they excavated some of my retaining wall, but nothing's been done to stabilize it. So I just want to make sure that you're aware of some of the improvements that's going on down there and some of the needs that need to be addressed. With that being said, if you're able to help me with any of this, I'm all for it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And before you leave, one of our staff members will meet you at the backfield to get your information so that appropriate city people can follow up with you.
I wish everybody the best and have a great blessed Easter if it comes upon us. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents?
Louisiana 3306 Bird Street. Just want to be in support for the record. Here is the proposed boundaries for the Business Improvement District. It goes from K Street to the north, down to just past Q Street, and then the interstate to the west, and 23rd Street to the east. And I'm in support.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Come on down. Provide your name, your address, and the basis of your opposition, please.
First of all, I apologize for not taking my hat off during the pledge of allegiance. First time I ever did that. Bernard Tompkins, 4811 South 24th Street. And the reason I'm concerned about this is because a number of years ago, I paid $10,000, $20,000 in special taxes to get the parking lot at 24th and End with the ingress egress. And years later, surreptitiously, the city took away the ingress and egress based on safety. I think that was something they thought of and couldn't think of anything else. But on that note, now I move to this day, and it shows the first year, $30,000. Who knows what the fourth year, fifth year might be. It could be $100,000. There's no cap on what the city will be allowed to spend. And therefore, in a case like this, you would be end up hurting small business, let alone the property owners. And as a council, you'd be raising taxes during the pandemic on small business and property owners. And therefore, this is not the time to raise taxes by the city council or the mayor staffer, one or the other. And I want to thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents? Seeing now, can we have Mr. Bernard Indembash, the deputy city attorney, to explain how the BID budgeting, planning, and expenditures and caps works? You've done every one of the BIDs in the city. Is that correct, Mr. Indembash?
At least all the ones that have been created in the last 20 years. Bernard Indembash, Deputy City Attorney. I guess I want to make clear, first of all, I'll address the budget question in a moment. The purpose of a Business Improvement District is to allow some level of self-determination by people in the neighborhood. If there are projects that they want to do above and beyond what the city is going to do as part of its normal function, it's a tool that allows for that. And the effort in South Omaha has been, it started up about five years ago, and then it kind of died after a couple of years. And then this restarted effort in the last year has been an effort to do exactly that. So the projects that we're talking about are projects above and beyond what the taxpayer, what your taxes will pay for. The board of the Business Improvement District will decide what needs to be done.
In public meetings, right?
In public meetings. And that's kind of, purpose here is the Business Improvement District doesn't occur without your assent by approval of an ordinance. And then what the city's involvement is from this point forward is we will pay the expenses. And then at the end of each year, we send out bills to people apportioned pursuant to how the ordinance establishes it. And there is no question that the initial budget for this particular Business Improvement District is $30,000. There is a cap in the ordinance that allows that budget to increase up to 5% per year. So that's, the idea that it might explode in year two or three isn't going to be permitted by purposes of this particular ordinance.
But again, the budget is set at public meeting. And any adjustments they annually submit, the board decides at public meeting, right?
The board will have public meetings. They'll discuss the projects and the budget. Whether they adopt a formal budget is going to be their mechanical things, but the reality is what they're authorized under this ordinance is capped, starts at $30,000, grows 5% per year. Point out one other thing there is in this particular ordinance. It will expire at the end of 2025, so this is an opportunity to see if it works. If, in order for this Business Improvement District to continue beyond 2025, you'll have to return to this council. The same notice will go out to everybody in the neighborhood, and another ordinance would have to be adopted.
Thank you. Kind of like what happened in Blackstone. There were some skeptics that didn't believe that that would work there, right?
It's been, downtown was the first one that had a cap, Blackstone's had a cap, North 24th Street has a cap. It's fairly common for a new one. Dundee and Benson go back to the 80s and 90s so that we didn't have as much skepticism there. But quite frankly, every Business Improvement District, other than those two, started off with a limitation on its charter.
Thank you, Mr. Indembash. I thought with your institutional knowledge and hands-on experience, it might benefit to have that as a part of the public hearing. The public hearing is now closed. We'll call on Vice President Palermo, Representative South Omaha.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. And I appreciate everybody being here in opposition, those that are, and those that are in favor as well, which we have a few people here that didn't come down, but they are in favor of this project. As I said earlier, I won't say finally, but I'll say it's about time. We can't talk about Omaha without mentioning South Omaha, especially this corridor along 24th Street and the beauty it provides, the diversity it provides, the jobs it provides for the city. It's the destination. And the city does so much, but after time, there becomes competition. And competition brings added expenses. And so for this BID, and I do appreciate the fact that there was mention of what would be spent, and of course, that's up to, and of course, there's a board that's established, and they don't have to spend this much money. They can determine that they're only going to spend a few thousand dollars the first year. But keep in mind, this money will be for extra maintenance, some improvements that may be needed, landscaping, beautification. Obviously, we have many planters along 24th Street that have got a facelift recently with money that's put back into the tiles. We know there's been a lot of volunteers, even a group that came in and planted quite a few plants along there. And without that watering system, they're just not going to make it with where we are, obviously. There's street cleaning, there's signage. There's a group behind this latest push for the BID that has actually seen this to the finish line. I will have to be honest, when I was elected, I was quite astonished that there wasn't a BID in South Omaha with the way my colleagues talked so much about their BIDs and how much it brought to the districts that they represent. So there is a little competition between us up here, and now I'm in that race. We have a BID. We need this BID. So now I'm part of the competition, Mr. President, and those that also have BIDs. So I want to put a special thanks out to Ross Peszek, who has text and emailed me quite a few times today, and I said he would not need to be here. quite a few times today, and I said he would not need to be here. This is the public hearing. We won't vote on this today, but we will. So there'll be time to talk to anybody that has any other questions. Either city staff can reach out to you, Ross, somebody from the BID, myself, whatever it is to get you the information you need. And I just want to say, I've been a part, this is the second push now for a BID. The first one had stalled. It was some other projects that were going on, and opposition showed up, and we decided to table it for a little bit. But there was a push because there are people in the community, especially in South Omaha, who know how much a project like this brings. So I want to thank those who have seen this through. I'm happy with where we're at, and again, this is the public hearing for the BID. So, thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Palermo. Councilmember Festerson, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. I would just commend Councilman Palermo for bringing this project to us, as he has indicated, it's been a long time coming. And with all Business Improvement Districts, really the hard part is all the consensus building you got to do to get to this point, both in terms of a budget and program of work, and also a program of assessment, and having property owners agree on those things. And this is quite an expensive area, as you saw by the map that was showed to us there, and so lots of different property owners. And to have so few questions here today indicates to me they've done a good job of reaching out and having those conversations with property owners and folks in the neighborhood. So I look forward to supporting this next time. As he indicated, we've seen great success with BIDs throughout the city in various different areas. I go back to the mayor's office in the early 2000s when we steered over $2 million of community development block rent money into 24th and L Street to do these original improvements, and the same thing in North Omaha, North 24th Street at 24th and Lake for $2 million. And so now to see both of them have a Business Improvement District, I think is great progress, and was always the thought at the time in terms of maintaining these infrastructure improvements and helping these neighborhoods revitalize and become all they can be. So I look forward to supporting this two weeks from now. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item.
Item 62, An Ordnance to Mend Two Sections of Chapter 46 of the Omaha Municipal Code to Track Life Safety Services.
The public hearing on item 62 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Before we begin item... Oh, did you want to speak, Mr. Festerson, on item 62? Okay, it's late, it was just on. Before we begin the public hearing on item 63, it's my understanding there's a, going to be a motion to place on file that is likely to pass, but since we've advertised the public hearing, if anyone did come to the meeting wishing to still speak on that item, now knowing it's going to go away, you still have the right to testify if you wish. We also have one person registered to speak by video. So is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak on this item? 63, okay, we'll open up the public hearing. Mr. Wren, welcome.
Good day. I am for the 6% to put a subordinate underneath the chief or to associate. Take some pressure off them, you never know if something's...
Mr. Wren, it's been a little while, but you have to give us your name, even though I know who you are, clerk knows who you are, we still have to have it in the record.
That can be good, bad, or indifferent to this Irish Catholic boy. Another time and place. Patrick Wren, I'm at 4903 California Street, Omaha, Nebraska, over in Dundee. Okay, all right. It's probably a good idea to get this thing pushed through. Why am I here? I belong to a group, it's, we've been together now for over 15 years. We get together at least once a month, and we discuss different issues, drink a little beer, sometimes we go dancing, but I consider them to be a pretty sharp group. And a couple ideas came up with this that might be of interest to the council, and I'm not here to be flippant. But we've done our homework, and here's what I'm going to say. Let's put this person into play, give them the 6%. It's going to put more pressure on the pension system. It may not be much, but it's another step toward the city's going to have to pay more money, that's basic math, to this individual when they decide to retire. Why am I standing here? Okay. It is a fact that Standard &amp; Poor, Phelps, Moody's, Best, Wees made it clear to the city that you're not putting enough money into that pension plan. Now whether that's the case or not, please don't shove it back into my face, but these are rating agencies, and they've done their homework. Why don't we consider doing the following? I believe the money is there that can be put into that pension plan to bring us up from a double A rating to a triple A. Now bear with me. If we do that, when we go to borrow money, our credit goes up, and it doesn't cost us as much to borrow those dollars, 200 million for the streets. And I still don't know what that's going to cost us, but basic common sense tells us that it's going to cost us more than with a double A rating than with a triple A. Okay, so where do we get the money to do that? Well, there's a couple places. We've got a restaurant tax that was passed...
Mr. Wren, your time's expired. You're always welcome to submit written remarks. Thank you for coming.
I will sit down, but there used to be five minutes. Why is it now three?
The rule is three minutes.
Excuse me?
The rule is three minutes, but thank you.
Why is it three and not five?
You're always welcome to submit ideas in writing.
Yes, but Chris, you don't answer your phone, and I know that from a fact.
Going to have to ask you to sit down. Thank you. Are there any other people wishing to testify as proponents who came to the meeting on this item? Are there any opponents on this item in the chamber? Okay, we'll move to Mr. Carney. Oh, Louise.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. President. Louis T. Menace, 3306 Bird Street. I want to show you guys the ordinance that's being proposed. I heard that part. I actually heard it two times today, and it is being proposed. Says here that, aside from the money being assigned to the person who gets the designation, or the deputy that gets the designation as Executive Deputy Chief of Police, which I think that if you're going to pass this, you should pass it without the 6% raise for the individual. That says here, it's going, the person designated as Executive Deputy Chief of Police shall perform the administrative and supervisory duties determined by the chief, and shall act as the chief of police when the chief is unavailable. It's not clear what those duties are. It's going to be determined by one individual. So my point is that, yet again, we have another public official who's going to be less accountable to the people of Omaha, and that's concerning to me. Thank you.
Are there any other opponents? Okay, we'll now go to the individuals registered to testify by video, Mr. Carney.
Hello, my name's David Carney, 5813 La Payette. Apologies for my camera being out of commission right now. I'm speaking against item 63 that creates a new Executive Deputy Chief position with a 6% bump in pay to someone who already makes over $150,000 a year. I understand that the council can't answer questions, but I'd like to ask a few, and hopefully the council will answer them afterwards. I appreciate the council taking my questions and concerns seriously when I spoke on the police training platform earlier this year. I'd like to know who exactly does this help? What concrete problems are there that this solves? It's my understanding that the city budget is a zero-sum game. Money that's spent on this won't be able to go towards mental health programs, addressing poverty, access to food, healthcare, education, all things that are the root cause of crime. It seems like the city prioritizes response to crime over prevention. According to OPD's own crime data from annual and quarterly reports, confirmed that the data reported to the FBI the past few years, the past few years have had the highest violent crime rate that we've had in the last 13 years. It also can't go without being mentioned that members of this council are campaigning right now on their dedication to public safety, and I'm just, I really don't understand how you can say that when we look at the data. Last year, we had more homicides than Baltimore, a city that traditionally has two and a half times as many homicides as us. We hear a lot about transparency from OPD and the city, but where is it? Would this new position increase transparency and accountability? Like, these are my priorities. Chief Modder said a few months ago in regards to the slaying of Kenneth Jones, "The body camera footage will be released for sure," and I support its release. Where is it? The grand jury was dismissed on Friday, and we're now on the Fifth Day sentence. It's up to the discretion of OPD to release body cam footage at all times, and to choose not to do so in nearly every case. In the report, talking about the first few weeks of protests this summer, OPD wrote that only two injuries were documented by OPD. This calls into question the requirement to report use of force. One man was permanently blinded by a pepper ball with no warning, and even though he was back behind the police line, in the video of that, OPD, an OPD officer walked up to him. Another man had flashbangs explode right next to his head after he stepped in front of some teenage girls being pepper balled on their bare legs. He suffered serious injury, including painful loss of hearing, sound sensitivity, and PTSD. OPD is definitely aware of this because they denied KMTV's request for the footage of the incidents. I'm asking you to vote no on this until the police department takes very real and concrete steps towards transparency, which my understanding comes down to decisions by the chief and the acting chief, since it's not codified in any law or policy. And I would challenge members of this council to please look into the data and actually work towards increasing public safety, because what we're doing isn't working. Thank you.
Thank you. The public hearing is closed. Councilmember Gray, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know we don't engage often in answering questions and so forth, but there's one item that came up, and my concern about it is because there had been a couple of other people that have asked about it as well. In the case of Mr. Jones, the grand jury has reached a decision, but as we found out in our Public Safety Committee meeting this morning, the chief doesn't have the authority to do that. That comes from the grand jury, and the grand jury intends to release the tape, but they also intend to release all of the transcripts that go along with that. So I just wanted people to know that that piece of the transparency is going to occur, but in that, in this particular instance, once it reaches the grand jury, it no longer becomes the property per se of the police department, it becomes the property of the grand jury, and the grand jury will release with the transcripts from the hearings as well. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Vice President?
No.
Nothing? We have a motion in a second, but before we do, I would just say I'm glad to see the motion to place on file this proposal. As the chairperson of the City Council's Human Resources Committee, this was something that didn't even come to our committee. Wasn't vetted by the, wasn't proposed to the committee, wasn't vetted by the committee. There was no studies that I was aware of performed by anyone regarding this position, why it was needed, the justifications, the costs, you name it. I don't believe it went to the personnel board. I may be wrong on that, but I don't believe it did. So I think that as a matter of, as policy... It's not our usual culprit. It's unplugged, just for the record. There we go. Thank you. And as a matter of policy, when you're going to branch out and have these new positions created, it's, to me, imprudent to go about it the way that this was presented. But I'm glad that common sense has prevailed and that this will be placed on file. So we have a motion in a second. Roll call.
Palermo, Brennan, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 64, An Ordnance Approving the Elkhorn Landing Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Agreement in an Amount Up to $985,609.
The public hearing on item 64 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Yes, good afternoon, Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning, on behalf of the project. I'm here to answer any questions, and the project has an applicant representative as well.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Michael Sands, 1700 Fordham Street, on behalf of the developer, the developer, Elkhorn Landing LLC, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed.
Item 13, An Ordnance to Rezone the Property Located Southeast of 178th and Pacific Streets From R4 District to R6 District. Planning Board Recommends Approval of Rezoning to R6. Planning Department Recommends Approval of Rezoning to R7. Cease Communications and Opposition.
The public hearing on item 13 begins at this time. Before we begin with proponents, I will remind people, we had a sign-in sheet system utilized today. If you came to the council wishing to speak on this agenda item and you have not signed in, there is still time for you to do so outside the door that you came into the chamber through. So please go out and fill out one of these sheets, and the member of the clerk staff will bring that form to me, and I will call on you. If this is your first time to the city council, we'll just provide you a little insight, the rules of the council. Allow each speaker three minutes to provide their testimony. The applicant is entitled to 20 minutes. So if you are a proponent or opponent, and you are individually speaking on behalf of yourself or a client, you get three minutes in which to do so. If anyone has written remarks that you'd like to extend or expound upon, or in any way expand what your verbal comments are, we always welcome those as a part of the record. You just hand those to the city clerk, or you can email them. We'll begin the public hearing at this time with proponents. Mr. Boozer.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, councilmembers. Jim Boozer, 10250 Regency Circle, Suite 300. Here on behalf of the applicant, I also have here with me today Jeff Lake and Eric Booth of Summit Development. And Jeff is going to say a few words, some details of the actual project. I'll make a little introduction here. So for purposes of reference as to where we're talking about, this is the intersection of 180th and Pacific Street. The project site is located just south of Pacific. You'll hear that there's a daycare facility, which is right here. There's a senior care facility, a memory care facility here. This is a combination of both some light office and some retail, including the Good Life Bar, which I think a lot of people here might be familiar with, see it advertised on the TV a lot. This is Elkhorn Public School site, and you're going to hear a lot of discussion about the school site. The area to the south of Poppleton is generally the resident, single-family residential. You'll also hear from them today, as well as the Villas component, which is a smaller development just to the east of our site. The site itself is 4.35 acres, and it's situated on two lots. There will be a total of 96 apartment units with a clubhouse that will be part of the project. In our rezoning request, we made an application for R7 zoning, which is medium-density multifamily with an MCC overlay, which stands for Major Commercial Corridor, from the existing R4 zoning. As reflected in the staff report, the property is within an area designated, or is just outside of an area designated as a 30-acre neighborhood mixed-use center, and that is where you'll find... And that is where you'll find this corner. That's where your office and retail components are within that thirty acres. There is allowed in the land use element of the master plan up to three hundred and fifty multifamily units immediately adjacent to these neighborhood mixed-use centers. We have ninety-six units. There are presently no other multifamily units within that three hundred and fifty maximum. At the planning board hearing, we had much discussion about the density of our project and concerns from the neighbors, some concerns about the density. The ninety-six units actually fits within the R six zoning, which is considered low-density multifamily, up to twenty units per acre. And with some modifications to our site plan to comply with site regulators, we are able to conform to the R six zoning. And we agreed, and the planning board supported the R six zoning, seven zero, at the planning board hearing. So again, that, I think, helps provide some assurances to the neighbors as to the density, and this is considered low-density multifamily. The developer, just from a background perspective, and you're gonna hear from a number of people today, we had a number of Zoom meetings with the neighborhood, both the homeowner association representing the entire area and the Villas Association, several Zoom calls, and I think some really good interaction. I don't think communications are at all the question in the project. I think everybody's been pretty open about the project and sharing information. We also have met with the daycare facility, the memory care facility, both of which are supportive of what we're doing. Mr. Lake will detail some of the conversations further, but he also had a discussion with Ryan Lindquist of Elkhorn Public Schools. And they, you know, are not either an opponent or supportive of the project. They just, that's typically not the school district's modus operandi to either support or deny a project, but they're not opposed to what we're doing on the site. So I'm gonna turn this over to Jeff, and he's gonna talk a little bit more about some of the neighborhood contacts, some of the concerns that were expressed, and some of the things that we've done to try and assure the neighbors that we're gonna be good neighbors ourselves. And, you know, at the end of this, I just ask that if we have questions and there's public input, that we be given an opportunity to respond as appropriate and answer any additional questions there might be for us. With that, I'll turn it over to Jeff to talk a little more about the project.
Thank you. Jeff Lake, you're recognized.
Good afternoon, Jeff Lake, two one zero zero eight Cumberland Drive with Summit Development. As Jim alluded to, we had numerous conversations, Zoom meetings, a couple of in-person meetings early on in the lifespan of this proposed project. We first started with the daycare, Small Miracle Daycare, which is located just to the southwest side of our project site. And then also with the Edgewood Memory Care Facility, that's on the southeast side. One of the main reasons for that, upon early discovery with the planning department, there was no additional access is going to be granted to the site off Poppleton, and we were to use shared access drives with both the daycare site and the memory care site. I then reached out through the Spring Ridge Association's website. They have a very good system set up, contact information, direct email addresses. Reached out to that association to begin conversations. Had several meetings, Zoom meetings with them. In the first meeting that I had, realized that the villa was not a part of the overall association, was a secondary association. We could not find contact information, so we sent out direct mailers, reached their board, started conversations with them. I believe we had three, before planning board, three Zoom meetings with the Villa Association and two with the Spring Ridge Association. As Jim Boozer mentioned, we spoke to the Elkhorn School District, generated some of their question concerns. They talked through what their circulation's like, acknowledged that there's traffic congestion there a couple of times a day. And they also had commented that they don't typically get into land use discussions. Their job is to educate students. So appreciated the heads up, but weren't going to speak one way or the other on behalf of the project. Those were a summary of some of the conversations we had had with those parties in hearing some of the concerns. I've got a site plan.
It'll automatic focus.
It will automatically Zoom. I need a... Help it? There we go. Okay, so I wanted to address a couple of items that had come up here, and I use colors here to maybe help a little bit. The yellow highlights is an access easement that was denoted on a plat that occurred in conjunction with the daycare facility. The green is an access easement shared with the memory care site. Both of those were referenced on the plattings as recorded separate instruments. The green site was, in fact, recorded against the property, and there was easement rights granted and worked through the details. Unfortunately, the yellow with the daycare site did not. So we do not have direct access rights via the land to do that. In conversations with the daycare, their primary concern with this project was impervious coverage. So when they developed their site, they had a zoning issue. Their avenue to do that was to increase the area of the site. They barely met that requirement. Adding this paving would pull them in non-compliance with zoning regulators. So I believe they came on planning board and spoke as a proponent of this project subject to that access drive not being in place. So our plan had adapted. We currently are showing two access points, one off of Poppleton, shared with the memory care, and then one off of one hundred and seventy-eighth Street, just south of Pacific, across from the existing commercial access drive. A couple of other items that we'd heard through conversations were concerns about drainage. It's a little hard to see, but there's a large storm shoreline that serves everything to the north side of the Pacific going through our site. We have adjusted our site plan. We used to have parking in this location, and our clubhouse was oriented so the doors faced south in conjunction with conversations predominantly with the Villas and with the memory care facility. We have turned that clubhouse, and we have moved it further north away from Poppleton. And we've also opened up additional area here, the blue space for stormwater detention. We are required to follow city ordinances, go through Public Works for approval of all of the drainage. That drainage is a no-net increase in a two-ten and one-hundred-year storm, which I'm sure you've heard of. Again, we've gotta get that approved by the city before we can obtain permits. I wanted to share just a little bit here on the units proposed. Is there a Zoom?
Yeah, it's on top. There you go.
All right, learned something today. Okay, our mixture of units, ninety-six units. Of those, we have twelve studios, forty-four one bedrooms, thirty-six two bedrooms, and four three bedrooms. The average for all of those in square footage is eight hundred and forty-one square feet. Average rent is proposed around a dollar thirty a square foot, or average rent for those units, just under eleven hundred dollars. And then lastly, I'll show you where we're at with building designs and elevations. Zoom back out. This is a evolving process. We've shown something very similar to this to the neighbors. There was some concern about what this looks like. We have three predominant materials on the building. I do have Patrick Sloggy with Sloggy Architects here as well. If there's any more specific concerns, I'm not an architect, I'm an engineer, so I struggle a little bit with this part. However, it's predominantly, the three materials are brick, stuck over effus, and siding. And those three materials are very similar to what we've seen in the surrounding neighborhoods. The north elevation along Pacific, it's three-story product. This is what that will look like, different materials undulating throughout. The south is the middle direction that is facing towards Poppleton. And then the side elevations, you'll see those depicted. So that's where we're at right now in our design. We do have an MCC overlay, so these do have to be reviewed by urban design in the planning department. That's primary materials, fifty percent on all sides. We believe this is...
You've got about a minute left on your time.
Okay, very good. We do believe it meets those requirements. And with that, I will answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there, we have another proponent, Mr. Morgan, did you wish to speak?
I think he was more there if there were specific questions.
Eric Williams, registered to speak.
And Eric, Eric's with Olson Associates, our engineer on the project. And if there were specific engineering-related questions, he was available.
Well, why don't you stay close? We're gonna move to the opponents. We'll begin with Mr. Healy, Dave Healy.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, your name and address, and then your testimony, please.
Hi, my name's Dave Healy. I'm at one seven two two six Pierce Street. I apologize, I'm picking up my children. I just wanted to bring it to the city's attention that the traffic on one hundred and seventy-eighth, where this is proposed for an entrance to this apartment complex, the traffic right there is a hazard already, especially during school time. And I'm afraid with the increased traffic, there's just gonna be a horrible accident someday. And so hopefully, the city will consider that, along with Elkhorn Ridge Elementary and Elkhorn Ridge Middle School are already overcrowded. And I think that this will bring more people in there. Thank you.
Thank you. Nancy Peters, you're next.
Hello, thank you. My name is Nancy Peters. I live at fourteen twenty South Hundred and Seventy-seventh Street in Spring Ridge. I'm also an attorney, but I'm here in my personal capacity. The determination to approve the R six zoning was an error and not in conformance with the city's master plan. I mean, one of the initial questions we have to ask ourselves today is what is the standard of review? Presumably, we're not here just to rubber stamp the planning board. We need to get a close review to Nebraska law and the city's master plan. Apartments have been rejected in Spring Ridge multiple times previously. Originally, over twenty years ago, the city council rejected the planning department's approval of apartments. Then again, in two thousand and eleven, the NODL companies attempted to put apartments at the same location currently under discussion. That proposal did not make it out of the planning department. So why is now the appropriate time where the area is already overbuilt for its infrastructure? When the streets can't handle the traffic, when the drainage system cannot keep up with the current runoff and is in deterioration? When the school system by its own announcement is overcrowded? Why is the time now to shoehorn an apartment complex into a barely large enough space? And if we look at the master plan, R six is low-density residential, which is defined as intended to be utilized primarily for the construction of single-family detached houses, duplexes, townhomes, and other forms of low-density residential. In contrast, the high-density mixed-use areas, which this is not, are defined to be multifamily residential uses. The city's master plan is based on Nebraska statute fourteen forty, fourteen four oh three, which said considerations are to include lessen congestion on the streets, to prevent overcrowding of land, to secure safety from flood, and to facilitate the adequate provision of transportation, water, sewage, schools, parks, and other public requirements, giving consideration to the character of the district. As you listen to the homeowners today, please bear in mind those considerations that are set forth in the Nebraska statute. You will find that none of these considerations are consistent with this apartment project. In Davis versus City of Omaha, the Nebraska Supreme Court determined that a zoning provision approved by the city council was void where it allowed for rezoning to permit a large apartment complex in a residential area. As in this case, the court noted increased traffic congestion. There was testimony that there were areas appropriately zoned nearby where the apartment could have been constructed, and the character of the district was inconsistent with an apartment complex. All of those factors are applicable here. I would do want to make one note on the traffic. You will hear about it, but the truly frustrating aspect of this problem is that no one will take responsibility for it. For the school, the Elkhorn School District said they were aware of the traffic problems, but it was not their responsibility.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Your time's expired. You're always welcome to submit additional comments in writing.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We'll now proceed, we have no more registrants by video. We'll now proceed to those who are in the chambers. We have Mr. Michael Matukowicz, attorney. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President. Michael Matukowicz and Hattie Miller appearing on behalf of Robert Moyle, who lives at fourteen fourteen South Hundred and Seventy-seventh Street, and David Peters, who's Nancy Peters' husband, with Nancy, fourteen twenty South Hundred and Seventy-seventh Street.
Did your partner wish to speak too?
She's not going to speak, but what she's going to hand you right now is the neighbors have generated four hundred and thirty signatures in the neighborhood in opposition to this project. It's from the neighborhood and the surrounding neighborhood. So four hundred and thirty Omaha residents who reject this plan. And a picture's worth a thousand words. What Nancy said is right on, and it is noteworthy that this is zoned R four currently. And if you look at the master plan for future use, here in the purple box where the arrow is, it's zoned for future use of R four as well. Now, there's much reference to the master plan and that it complies with it. However, if you look at the concept element vision in the master plan, it says that Omaha's urban forum must be carefully designed to eliminate land use conflicts, reduce traffic congestion, encourage pedestrian movement, and incorporate open space. The concept element also talks about avoiding changes in land that would generate traffic in excess of the design capacity. And the urban development section of the master plan talks about the same things. We need to have well-maintained capacity and infrastructure. Here, it's just not the time for this project. Now, this is a video taken before the planning department meeting. This is one hundred and seventy-seventh Street, where Nancy and Dave Peters live and where Mr. Moyle lives. This is an average morning, again, at eight oh nine AM on a school morning. I'm gonna advance this to about thirty seconds. We see some cars jumping the line, and in fact, they just stop cold here and block the entire street. And just to show this isn't an aberration, a video taken on the very next day shows the same thing. Excuse me. And I'm gonna jump ahead here to thirty seconds. We see a Range Rover jumping the line, going pretty fast again. This is a mess. This is a parking lot every morning. This was just yesterday, March twenty-ninth, at five forty-five. This should be the tail end of rush hour. This is going southbound off of one hundred and eightieth towards Pacific. So this is one hundred and eightieth Street going towards Pacific. We're lined up, this street right here is Harney Street that I'm showing you right here. So we're just south of, or, excuse me, yes, south of Dodge. That's at five forty-five. Another picture of the same. Here is a drone footage that was actually just taken this morning. This shows the other direction. This is going westbound on Pacific Street towards one hundred and eightieth. Again, look at the traffic backed up. This is this morning at about between eight and nine AM. There's only single lanes here. This is the same way, but they're going, this going down here is westbound, same. Next, I'm gonna show the school in the morning one more time. The point is, you'll see this is a two-lane road using, being used by three. The point is, this is not the right time for this project. At planning, they said that there's a future plan to widen one hundred and eightieth and Pacific to four lanes or two lanes on each side. Until that's done, this project is not ripe. It simply is going to cause a disaster. It's already a very difficult area with traffic, and we respectfully request that the council deny this ordinance and the zoning change.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Margaret Von Tussel, or Von Tersch.
Thank you. It is Margaret Von Tersch. I live at fourteen forty-two South Hundred and Seventy-seventh Avenue. I am right on the corner of...
Hold on, we're, stop the clock and we'll start it over. We have to adjust the deal. Okay.
All right. I live at fourteen forty-two South Hundred and Seventy-seventh Avenue. I'm right on the corner of the elementary school, so I'm kind of in that cross. So there is a ton of traffic. There always has been a ton of traffic. Even during the day, there's just as much traffic as there is during the timeframe. But I just wanted to let you know that in the zip code of one six eight three oh, we have two hundred and twenty-two vacant apartments right now. We certainly do not need any more apartment complexes, especially not ninety-six units. That's just gonna create a lot of chaos in our area, as far as all of us residents are concerned. Nobody, Mr. Lake, had said, they did some calling. I don't, I don't remember ever... I don't, I don't remember ever getting a call from anybody asking us what our thoughts were on any of this. With all those apartments that we have, I don't know, can that get in there? I don't know how we use this. But this is right now, all the apartments that I was going to talk about that we have right now. There's the Legacy Apartments, the Dalmar Apartments, Traditions by Broadmoor, Eagle, Grand Legacy, Legacy Flats, Rabio, and Breckenridge. All of those are like 222 apartments vacancies. We certainly don't need any more. I think what we do need to have is some single-family residents. As stated, we are in a shortage, so why don't we try to work with a developer and try to get some very nice villas put in, or some different single-family residents? We all know something's going to be there, but we certainly don't need 96 apartment complexes. That's our units. That's just ridiculous. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Sheila McNeil.
Hi, I'm Sheila McNeil. I live at 17402 Poppleton Avenue. That's kind of at the end of Poppleton from where the subject lot is. The lot in question is bounded by 178th Street, by Pacific Street, and by Poppleton Avenue. I looked up the definition of avenue. I think that might be part of the problem here. An avenue is a broad road in a town or a city. It's an artery, boulevard, expressway, freeway, et cetera. Pacific, or Poppleton Avenue is a plain two-lane street. If you have a car parked and two cars want to go past, they have to wait until one of them goes before they can go. You know, it's not an extra wide street. It's the same way with 178th. And Pacific, you already know, it hasn't been widened. And it's going to be widened, but right now, it's not. But this lot will never have ingress or egress from Pacific Street. It's just not, you know, it's not ever going to happen. And so now that they're down to just two entrances, how are they going to handle 96 cars, at least 96? There are times in the winter, I kind of live where, if I have... Anyway, Poppleton comes-
It's on. You can point to it. We just turned it on for you.
If I can find it, there's Poppleton. Anyway, Poppleton comes from 174th Street. You go two blocks from Pacific, and you turn right onto Poppleton, and it winds around and comes to a corner. And so it turns right, and it's still Poppleton. And so my house is just right on that corner, and I have quite a large side yard. So I have like a view of the street and so on. And in the winter, the wind blows through there, and the snow blows through there. And one time, well, actually more than once, it's blocked Poppleton Avenue. But one time, there was a six-foot drift that the city had to send a front loader and dump trucks to clear. So my point with that is, that's not a good route for people trying to get to those apartments. And you don't have, you don't, there's no really good way to get to those apartments. So that's pretty much my story.
Thank you. You remind me of my Aunt Sheila, by the way.
Well, I am an Aunt Sheila.
Okay. Barb Casson.
Barb Casson, 1310 South 175th Avenue. Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to address the council with concerns regarding the plan to add a 96-unit apartment complex in our neighborhood. I have lived in Spring Ridge since 2005. It has been a wonderful neighborhood to call home. We are a multi-generational neighborhood, and we take care of each other. My brief talking points and questions are as follows. I'm an elderly retired elementary school teacher, so traffic is not a serious problem for me. Personally, I can stay home during those prime times, but I do have concern for the safety of my neighbors' young children when they are walking or playing in the neighborhood. I treasure those kids, and increased traffic will create a danger to them. It's inevitable. Sometimes Poppleton becomes a raceway. Speed bumps don't even slow them down. I'm not against having more neighbors in the area, but I'm old enough to understand reality. If you cram too many eggs in a basket, there will come a point in time that something will break. I would not object to more housing in the area because I understand the desire to live close to shopping, restaurants, childcare, and schools. That's why I love this neighborhood. Perhaps less would be more if the developers would consider building more villas or duplexes, as have been suggested. Finally, I know you can't answer my questions, but they are as follows. If you currently live in an established neighborhood, how would it impact you and your family if such a plan as this was proposed to be squeezed into your neighborhood? Please put yourselves in our shoes and look beyond financial concerns and benefits to the tax base. We're folks just like you. Thank you again for the chance to express myself. I do hope it hasn't fallen on deaf ears, because a decision has already been made. I do know that happens, and I'd like to think this hasn't been a waste of time for any of us here today. Thank you.
Thank you. Ray Boyce. Jenny, is it Hozzy? Hoz, you're next. Followed by Jane Slobath.
My name is Ray Boyce. I live at 1409 South 177th Street. And I'm going to talk to you a little bit about the traffic mass and what it will be. I think all of you have experienced a merry-go-round in a school, and it goes slow enough where you can get off. This time, it's going to triple, and you're going to fall off. It's a matter of congestion, and I'm going to address some other points. The rezoning of the large vacant lots, South to Pacific and Pompey Dale, between 177th and 178th Street, for the purpose of developing apartments in four buildings with 45 garages and leasing office, makes no sense if one only observes the traffic on the narrow street. With the garages, what is to become of the remainder of the cars and trucks? There is surely no room for street parking. The traffic that snakes around 177th and 178th for school in the morning, and again, at 3:30, is something we avoid now. The fact that these, there would be no exit other than 178th on Pacific or East of Pompey is a residential area with winding streets makes for increased wait time at the stop signal at 178th and Pacific, and it is difficult now. In addition to the serious problems with the traffic and parking allocation, the very idea of apartments means that our property will be valued. We chose this neighborhood 10 years ago when moving to Omaha from Western Nebraska. And I think you would see a lot of new residents if you would have decent places like we're talking about. It really is a community at its best. We hope that we can continue to live where we are. Remember, you've all been on a merry-go-round, and if it keeps going around fast enough, you're going to fall off.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jenny Hoz. I reside at 1331 South 177th Street. I'm just three houses from the proposed development. And for the record, I, myself or my husband, were never contacted at all about this development. I'm here today because I am opposed to rezoning. My family moved to the Spring Ridge neighborhood almost 18 years ago. We know the traffic problems of living out west. We also understand that development needs to happen, but we just want any development that's going to happen to make sense. The traffic in the Spring Ridge area is chaotic, to say the least. When you have an elementary school right by the proposed apartment, and middle school just north of the proposed apartments, you have children that are walking to and from the elementary school, as well as the middle school. They play Frogger every day just to try to get through the traffic. A traffic study will easily show you how chaotic the traffic is in this area. And then when you couple that with the busy strip mall, Hy-Vee, which is across the street, having an apartment complex exiting into my neighborhood is a complete nightmare. We have had the Omaha police officers on our street before. They have commented to my husband and I that the amount of traffic on our street, they could not believe. They even approached the city trash drivers and said, "Please do not come down the street during school pickup and drop-off time, because you will just make it even more chaotic." And as you are aware, there's a memory care facility that is located on this land as well. And if I have loved ones here, I would be very uncomfortable having an apartment complex hover over them. These patients deal with dementia and Alzheimer's. That noise and commotion would be very hard to their well-being. And it saddens me to think that they would have to deal with this. In addition to that, we also know that there's the daycare facility. Although my children are older and not at the daycare age anymore, I would be extremely uncomfortable to have a busy apartment complex right on top of the daycare, especially because their playground area backs right up to the apartment buildings. The city had a master plan, and the plan was for 178th Street to be zoned R4. So my question is, why should that be changed now? Can you really say that more apartments are needed in this area? Is my understanding, as was stated before, that there's many apartments that are bailed by right now in the 68130 ZIP code, one more reason why this does not make sense? So if you truly are seeking housing for this land, why not build villas or townhomes? A small villa or townhome community would be less noise, less traffic, less light pollution, and would complement the area and the villas that are there right now. And lastly, I'm just going to end with the old adage that just because you can, doesn't mean you should. So please do not vote for the rezoning. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Jane Slobath, followed by Anita Van Ert, and then Gwen Heller.
Good afternoon. My name is Jane Slobath. I reside at 1330 South 177th Street. Not sure how this works here, so I can show-
They'll turn it on for you.
Okay. And I am three houses down from the apartments, and I have never been contacted by Mr. Lake. With regards to school traffic during the morning drop-off time, the traffic from Spring Ridge School backs up down Shadow Ridge Drive to the east, all the way down 177th to the north, and wraps around onto Poppleton to the west. This is a distance of over four blocks. The vehicles on 177th Street consistently choose to cut the line and treat the northbound lines of 177th as southbound. It is extremely important to note, this is not an aberration. It has been going on for years and is only exasperated in non-pandemic times when the residents of the neighborhood are not working on studying remotely or on a staggered start schedule. The scheduled congestion exists whenever school is in session, posing a risk not only to the residents attempting to exit their driveways, but far more importantly, to the students who walk to the nearby schools. In the spring and fall, a large number of neighborhood students walk to either Spring Ridge Elementary or Elkhorn Ridge Middle School and are forced to play a game of Frogger with the queues of traffic on the surrounding streets. The safety of these students rests with the city. We urge you to take an assessment of the traffic this spring during school drop-off hours and see the dangers posed to students. Adding further traffic and parking congestion will only increase the risks faced by the students. The city is already familiar with the traffic congestion at 180th and Pacific. During the morning rush hour, the traffic backs up for blocks both northbound approaching Pacific on 180th and eastbound on Pacific west of 180th. Again, this traffic poses a safety hazard to the students attempting to walk to the neighborhood schools. In the evening rush hour, it is not uncommon for the southbound traffic on 180th Street to back up from Pacific all the way to Walgreens on 180th and Burke Street. This cannot be safe traffic, a safe traffic flow that the city recommends for its residents. And some, for a number of reasons, we homeowners in Spring Ridge strongly object to the proposal rezoning of the land at 178th and Pacific. We've received multiple assurances, over 25 years' worth in past, that apartments were not suitable for the locations. And homeowners have relied, we purchased our properties, both on the zoning and assurances of the planning commission and the city. Moreover, the area is not compatible with the proposed apartment complex. Perhaps most significantly, the safety and welfare of the residents, in particular, the students who walk to the surrounding schools, is put further at risk from the proposed rezoning. We urge the city to put the safety of students first and reject this proposed rezoning. I have articles from 1996, when we started, when you guys started turning it down. No, 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 no. When we bought our house in 2000, it's a church, great, church, something of the sort. Now, you've received a letter from Lyle. He's a guru. 96 flushing toilets. We, it's not set up for that. Way back to the common area, there's this drain. My son just spent three hours and got 75 pounds of stuff in that drain. The drain is deteriorating. I should have brought up the water pictures, another, another-
Thank you.
-one. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
While Anita Van Ert makes her way down to the podium, if you came to speak on this item and you have not yet signed in to speak, we have about five or six more speakers registered, so you still have time to do so. Ms. Van Ert.
Hi, my name's Anita Van Ert. I live at 1320 South 177th Street, and thank you for letting me speak today. For all the reasons you have been hearing, we oppose the rezoning of the land on 178th and Poppleton. I need to let you know, I was never contacted by anyone regarding this. I am going to address the water issues, and only the water issues. Our house is two houses down, it's two houses south of the intersection of 177th and Poppleton. This picture that you see now is a tree in my backyard, and this is when the water was slowly approaching that tree. Our backyard's back to the common area that runs from Poppleton to Shadow Ridge Drive between 177th and 178th. The common ground is a beautiful space, but in recent years, it has experienced more severe flooding, even with the moderate rains. In addition, the cement drainage pipes are strained and deteriorating. Spring Ridge is on, Spring Ridge is on the downhill slope from 180th and Pacific. Water naturally flows in our direction, although in the past, there was natural vegetation and soil to absorb the water. As development has taken place to the north of Spring Ridge, the overflow of rainwater and natural runoff from the north has resulted in continually increased flooding and water overflow of the yards and common ground around our house and the other houses in the neighborhood. When Hy-Vee was built at 180th and Pacific, and then the childcare was built on 178th and Poppleton, the drainage issues in the common ground became more severe as the natural vegetation to the north was replaced with pavement. The yards in the common ground now flood more readily and drastically, and the trash from the drains accumulate on common ground. I understand the design in the area is for the floodwaters in the common ground to, is to reach our yards only when the most heavy of rains occur. That's like six to seven inches of rain. In fact, even with a moderate rain now, the rain, the water has come into our yards in recent years. We cannot do anything about the fact that the infrastructure was put in place for drainage when the subdivision was originally formed and did not take into consideration the heavy toll from the surface waters resulting from development of the north, of that to the north. The lot at issue, which the developer seeks to rezone, is now natural, nearly all natural vegetation. The developers' plan for the apartment complex show pavement of nearly the entire surface.
Thank you.
This is the picture of the- This is the picture of the drainage somewhere. This is a picture of a four-foot drainage ditch, two-thirds full, that flows into a three-foot drain. There, this is just impossible. It will not work. Thank you.
Thank you. Gwen Heller, followed by, followed by Chelsea Carlgaard.
Hello, my name is Gwen Heller. We live at thirteen ten South one hundred and seventy-seventh Street. We've been in our house since November. My husband and I bought the house fully aware of the vacant lot north of us, hoping for the best. We knew of the R4 zoning. And we, the only communication we had was, we didn't even have the boxes unpacked. And we got a letter saying, look what's going to happen here. Just the simple fact of ninety-six apartments, a clubhouse, parking lots, garages, that just seems overwhelming for such a small area. And, you know, at this point in time, we've been in our house three months. Moving is not an option, and I've never heard of apartments increasing the value of a home. So we were, we were pretty distressed by that. I guess everybody kind of stole my thunder. Everything they said, I echo. You know, if it was turned down before, what makes it different now? You know, at this point, we're stuck, and we are directly, we are across the street. And our front yard would be directly out the drive of the memory care center. I'm not looking forward to that. We hope to enjoy the home in our retirement with our grandkids. And I don't see with the traffic already there, how that could happen. But we can't move, and I'm surely thinking someone could find another, maybe another possible spot for their development. So appreciate your time. I echo everything everybody said. We feel very strongly about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Chelsea Carlgaard, followed by Deb Wilson and Pat Hayes, and then Karen Johnson.
Hi, Chelsea Carlgaard, thirteen thirty-eight South one hundred and seventy-seventh Street, Omaha, six eight one three zero. I am four houses down. I also did not receive any formal communication other than through our HOA. Basically, I have the same thought process as many of us do. Is the traffic, is the number one issue? I hear a lot about city council talking about data-driven, and I just think there isn't enough data right now to support a decision either way. My big thing is for this R6, there's a noise level on the receiving end. It shouldn't be more than sixty D B A and up to sixty-five D B A. So where's the data on that that the planning board has given you guys to make a sound decision? That this is even something that is going to be workable as far as noise goes with the pool right next to the memory care? They're all right next to each other. So I just think that that's something that hasn't been brought up, and I think it needs to be. This is something that I can't truly speak to, but I think it's worth noting that there is a Nebraska statute, I believe, that talks about how the developer needs to inform the school board ten days prior to the first planning board meeting. And as far as I know, he spoke with Ryan, who is not part of the planning board at the Elkhorn School District. And so I think we need to gain clarity as to where all processes follow there as well. But bottom line, I think there needs to be a data-driven-based decision to support this building. We are not anti-development, and we just want to find the right thing for this piece of property. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Deb Wilson, one three one five South one hundred and seventy-eighth Street. I'm going to read a letter that Lyle Christiansen, my neighbor, wrote. Lyle is a Spring Ridge HOA homeowner and a formal consulting engineer, assisting the city and Papio Missouri River N R D in updating the city sewer master plan and the Papio watershed plan. Lyle had three major concerns. The existing storm sewer and surface draining system. The system predates the existing not-to-exceed design criteria for controlling the surface runoff. There are concerns about the adequacy of the existing infrastructure relating to the proposed new development and future development with the planning department master plan. Homeowners living south of Popleton have witnessed highly pressurized water gushing from the outfall and approaching on homeowners' property, even though we have not had a hundred-year rainfall event yet. Along the property lines are O P P D power boxes and internet boxes. Even a slight increase in runoff could cause out, power outages and internet interruption and flooding of basements and lower levels. Existing buried stormwater piping infrastructure needs to be supplemented and upgraded before construction. There are concerns about the existing sanitary sewer system, the capacity of the sewer system and the physical condition of it to accept additional flow. Sanitary sewer backups cost tens of thousands of dollars in damages and may not be covered by insurance and are definitely not fully compensated by the city. Water pressure is another issue we've run into. Homeowners south and of and along Popleton have marginal water pressure for irrigation system. The decreased demand by water by the proposed complexes for home use, sprinkler systems, and fire protection sprinkler systems will cause noticeably lower water pressure than the existing conditions. Now, I can show you other pictures and I can talk more about the green space, but no one's brought up that, the fact that a hundred, oops, not up there anymore. Hundred and seventy-eighth Street is a one-way street for four hours a day. The school's on the west side and the street is closed. It's a one-way street. Parents park to pick up their children, legal or not. And that road is, like they said, children playing Frogger, cars going in and out. All of us are trapped in our homes for four hours a day while the traffic volume's heavy. Thank you for listening. If you have any questions.
Thank you. Pat Hayes, and then Karen Johnson.
Pat Hayes, one seven four two South one hundred and seventy-seventh Avenue. And I am a member of the HOA board and want to put to rest any ideas that the reason why we might or may not have opposed this is because we simply don't have the funds to oppose it. But we do, which leads me to the next issue. Because of the potential increased water, potential increased traffic in our common area, which is privately owned by the HOA, the, and the expense of all of that upkeep. So that is a concern to us with a very limited budget, additional cost to residents, all of the things that apply by having additional people using potentially our private property. And I know that the development is doing things like putting in a dog area, but depending on the size of your dog and the size of the area, it may not be enough. So I anticipate that it'll be more traffic through that common area and increase the upkeep and the cost of that upkeep. And then, you know, not to mention the water damage that everybody's talked about that could potentially result, which is why I think we need to do a water study to make sure that all of the not increase in the water flow is accurate. I do want to thank everybody for listening to us. I know there's a lot of us, and I appreciate all of your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen Johnson.
Karen Johnson, thirteen forty-six South one hundred and seventy-seventh Street. I really don't have anything to add other than what all my neighbors have said. Anita made a really good point. We live on the common area. We would be five houses down to watch the water come down through there and approach, you know, the large green electrical boxes that are in the backyard. You stand and watch and wonder how long it's going to be before you have to call O P P D because you no longer have power. Traffic is, yes, a huge problem. I don't leave my house before nine o'clock in the morning because I can't get out. Appreciate you listening to everything we have to say. And I expected new neighbors. I didn't expect ninety-six new neighbors.
Thank you. Do the proponents wish three minutes rebuttal?
Jeff Lake, two one zero zero eight Cumberland Drive. A couple of items there. I do want to, with the concerns of traffic, just touch upon that and the school patterns, because I don't think we explained that very well. I believe Deb had mentioned that one hundred and seventy-eighth Street's a one-way, northbound only. So what happens with the flow of traffic? All the cars come down one hundred and seventy-eighth Street, come down Shadow Ridge Drive, and either get queued up to come into this drop off area or this drop off area. And this area does, when you see the videos and the pictures, it was all through this area. I've sat out a few times and watched traffic flow from the project site. And Popleton Avenue has always been free-moving. There are cars on it, but it doesn't get the gridlock situation that we've seen. And that's, that's one of the reasons we feel it's important for the access drive at one hundred and seventy-eighth Street. You have the ability to get out to one hundred and seventy-eighth, out to Pacific. You can get out of the way versus getting in with the rest of the residents. As far as traffic too, we did a little quick traffic trip generation. In the morning peak hours, for the one-hour worst time, you get traffic generated from a site from these apartments, ninety-six multifamily units. That number's twenty-six cars. So there's twenty-six trips over the course of one hour. That's one over every two minutes. So it's not like there's a flood of cars being introduced, and we believe they'll get out, easily out to one hundred and seventy-eighth Street. Other items with the drainage, that's something, probably defer to Public Works. We have our opinions of that. I'd like to hear from Public Works on that. And then maybe I assume Master Planning will cover some of the, I'm sorry, the Planning Department will probably cover some of the topics on the master planning discussion. Assume from that, I think that's really all I had. Maybe if Mr. Bujer had any last comments in the remainder of our three minutes. Do you have any?
I have a good question.
You're always available for questions, right?
Okay. Thank you.
So at this time, we'll close the public hearing. And we have Councilmember Harding. You're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I'd like to thank all the neighbors who have come down today and previously a planning board and have contacted me via phone and email. I've tried, I haven't been able to get back to everyone, admittedly, but I think I've, I've tried to deal with a lot of the key spokespeople who hopefully have been able to deliver those messages as well and have been involved with some of the Zoom calls, both with the Villas and the Homeowners Association. I heard a couple of things, if I could, Mr. Lake, have you come up? I heard a couple of things that, I don't know, I thought I had heard differently in the past about the contact. I heard a number of people here today say that they had not been contacted. And I don't know if that's, they might be outside of the area that the notifications get sent to? Or can you explain maybe what some of those comments were about?
Sure. I guess with the Spring Ridge Association as a whole, we started with our HOA board. They have a very well-set-up website. There's notices, there's communications lists. And we started with that board, and we've asked that question of notifications. You guys handle this? How is that done? So we haven't contacted the whatever, two-hundred-and-some-odd other residents that were within there when we didn't have the Villa Association contacts information without having that, that infrastructure, the website. There's where we sent the direct mailings. And I believe we also sent it to the first couple of houses that were just south of Popleton. We pulled that kind of one hundred and fifty, you know, two-hundred-foot radius around our project site and sent those out ourselves. I think that's in addition to the city notification policy. So our opinions and feelings were that there was ample connectivity out to the HOA with all their infrastructure, to Spring Ridge as a whole, and then the Villas, we reached them out independently.
Yeah, I guess I'll keep going as long as, as long as you're there. And I don't know if you want to have Planning or Public Works take, respond to some of these as it relates to the, whether or not this is high-density or low-density? Do you want to take that, or do you want me to have someone from Planning?
I think, I think that might be good. I'd probably state sort of the same positions from the master plan and the planning documents. I believe R6 and its designation is listed as low-density residential in just the name of R6. And then I said the provision for multi, for, in the master plan for how multifamily works. You know, it is adjacent commercial on a neighborhood mixed-use center, which this is at one hundred and eightieth. It's a thirty-acre center. Anything adjacent to that in the master plan calls for up to three hundred and fifty multifamily units that are available to use. I believe there's also a little asterisk on the side too, that you can do a hundred units per the master plan, not connective to that, kind of out as long as it's a quarter mile away from other multifamilies. So there's a few different provisions in the master plan, if you'd studied it, that outline when and where you can do multifamily.
Okay. Ryan, if, I'm a.
Ryan Haas, Public Works. Would you come down, please?
Thank you. I'm assuming any, I wanted to address some of the issues as related to some of the pictures that were shown today that I've seen over the last couple of months, I guess, as it relates to runoff. Could you kind of address some of those issues as it might relate to the site?
Yeah, the city has, sorry, Ryan Haas with the Public Works Department. City has requirements for a known at increase, and that's required as part of the building permit submittal. They'll have to have an engineered post-construction stormwater management plan. In addition to treating for stormwater quality for the, for the runoff, they will, they'll have to essentially provide measures to ensure that the runoff from the site after constructed will be identical to what's out there today. So it's a city requirement to have an engineered solution to essentially address the stormwater and keep it no worse than is occurring today on the site.
So would it be, so the pictures that you've seen, and maybe I can ask one of the neighbors. I don't know if you're familiar with it. Is that, are those pictures mostly coming from the area between the kind of what it's, it looks like an outlot from, from the plan? The area in between the backs of the houses that runs up to Pacific Street?
I'm not as familiar with the drainage particulars of how they go. I don't know if that's better projected.
Is there, do you have a, I don't know if someone's got the aerial or if we have the aerial handy. Actually, I think it was maybe Mike's information, maybe.
Were you referring to the one on the, in the, one of the presenters put on?
Well, I don't, it could be, okay, actually, so the area, let's see, the area that runs in between one hundred and seventy-eighth and one hundred and seventy-seventh Street? If you could point, if you could point to that area, I think the, well, a little more to your, that, that tree or that green area between the unplanted, unparcelled ground.
The drainage way here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that where, is that where those pictures are coming from for the most part?
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. The rules of the, of the chamber to maintain decorum do not allow for the audience to be participating from their seats. At this stage of the meeting, a council member will have to call you up to the microphone. But if you have, by the way, any of you who brought exhibits that you use to show through the Almo, who do not make them a part of the record, I invite you to approach the clerk with your evidence so it is a part of the record. Please proceed.
So, but with the development of this site, and I think the general fall of the ground probably goes from north to south. So I think there are some concerns about that adding additional flow into that, that area.
You know, again, the, the city has requirements for certain storm events, and they'll measure what's going on out there today as far as what's flowing off the site. And following the construction of all the improvements, all the impervious, the pavement, the buildings, they will be required as a condition of their building permit to construct engineered solutions to slow the stormwater runoff, to again, not provide any increase over what's going off-site now, present day.
Okay. Now, let me switch to traffic, because I know that's, that's been an issue that with the people I've been talking with have raised a great deal of concern. Why, why is a traffic study not required on something like this?
Yeah, with any proposed development, there's a threshold that the city uses as to whether or not to require a traffic study. And it's based on the number of peak hour trips. So it's a general rule of thumb, but it's one hundred trips is the threshold. So we use the, there's a standard, national standard reference document for calculating the number of peak hour trips. And with, based on the number of units, we can calculate how many trips we would expect to see in the peak hour. So for example, the P M peak, the total, the worst-case P M peak hour is forty-two trips for this proposed development. So well under the threshold of what we typically. So well under the threshold of what we typically would require for traffic study. That being said, we looked at what's out there at one hundred and seventy eighth and Pacific. So what kind of things would we expect to see, maybe a traffic study would, would recommend? A right turn lane on Pacific that exists already, left turn lanes on Pacific that's out there, traffic signal warrants that's already signalized. So essentially, there's not a lot that, that could be done based on the scope of this project. Admittedly, one hundred and eighty of the Pacific, it's over capacity, and, and I think that's, that's evident if you drive out there and from the pictures you've seen. We're aware of that issue, and there's a, a project in the CIP to widen one hundred and eighty street. That's from, essentially from north of Center, all the way up to Harney Street. So that would address the capacity issues at one hundred and eighty of the Pacific. We've, we've done all we can there as well. We, we just put some turn lanes in there a couple of years ago to again, squeeze the most out of the capacity that we have available today. But, but based on, I mean, relative to the, the trips that go through that intersection, forty two trips is fairly insignificant. It's, is it going to add delays? Sure. But not to the point where we would require this project to provide public improvements to offset that delay.
And as long as you're talking about the, the CIP and one hundred and eighty, can you talk about Pacific Street then too?
Pacific Street is also in the CIP. It's a further, it's, doesn't have an identified year of construction, but the one hundred and eighty street project would, would provide widening at least for the intersection at Pacific. So that would, that would go a long ways towards increasing capacity on the corridor. I, I don't know if it would extend as far east as one hundred and seventy eighth, but if not done as part of that near term project, then the next project along Pacific from, roughly from one hundred and sixty ninth to one hundred and eighty third would widen Pacific at that, at the signal at one hundred and seventy eighth.
Okay, and just, just for the record, regardless of what the outcome is here today, and we've just recently had a request come to us for CIP projects, and I, I am asking for one hundred and eighty to be bumped up in the cycle, and then also to put an identifiable date on Pacific Street as well too. So thank you for, thank you for at least talking through, through those. And again, regardless of the outcome, I'm, I'm making those requests. I think that might be all I had for, for the traffic design, or for traffic and, and the runoff, because I think those were, those were certainly two of the questions I got the most from, from the, the neighbors and, and, and the residents that surround the Hold on, I've got to go through all my notes if, if you don't mind here. If I could, from the development team, just ask a couple of questions as it relates to building materials and, and the architecture. Give your name again, please.
Sure, Jeff Lake, two one zero zero eight Cumberland Drive. I will put this on here, and at some point, if there's more extensive questions, is it possible for somebody who hasn't spoken, and Patrick Morgan, our architect, to respond to that, or is it?
It's up to you, however you want to handle that.
Okay.
I guess, one, and I know in, in some of the Zoom calls that we've had, there were great questions about the, about the architecture, the materials, what it would look like, and so this is, I understand it, still has to be approved by Urban Design Review Board, correct?
Correct.
Because of the, because of the MCC overlay?
That's correct.
Okay. I'm getting, Dave, did, how, Dave, could you come, Dave Fanzlo, could you come down as well too? I'll ask a couple more questions, maybe Mr. Fanzlo can weigh in, the Planning Director, but is, is this the, I'm, I'm looking at this, it looks kind of flat. Is there any, I mean, is there, and I heard one of the neighbors on one of the Zoom calls bring up the question of, of, you know, if there was any board and bat, board on bat and definition to it, or is it sort of a flat surface, or?
Sure, good question. I, I guess one thing this doesn't really articulate very well is sort of the undulations in the buildings and the shadows that that creates. There's, there's lines and, and bump outs and bump ins to the, to the archus, architecture of that. Patrick's going to come here as well. Yeah, there's a good picture. That, that's of the floor plan, it kind of shows a little bit of the, the movement in and out of the, of the wall. So it's not just a straight, you know, concrete wall. And as far as those materials, the, the lighter colored material here is an Epha Stucco type material. The, the darker colored material here is brick. And then cedar mill siding, which is kind of your, your hardy board siding, we have some, some elements of that in here, a little bit different color. Patrick and I are maybe on a complete agreement if this is the appropriate color or not, but we'll work through that before final submittal. And then similar on, on the south elevation, you see some of those materials with the, the Ephas, the siding, the brick, more Ephas or Stucco, different colored siding. So those three elements are, are brought into the building. We had shared with the, you know, with the HOA boards that, you know, that if there's suggestions or other items, we would listen. You know, we can incorporate everything from, from how this, how this looks. It's, it does have to meet requirements. There's a lot of ways that things can meet the requirements, and sometimes beauty is in the eye of the beholder. But with that said, we, we did state that we would listen to suggestions they might have. I haven't received any as of yet, but we, we extend that offer as we move forward.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Mr. Fanzlo? Sorry, I think I was asking a question, and maybe you were shaking your head, so I wanted to ask.
Yeah, Dave Fanzlo.
Was there something wrong, or was, was the question, was, was the answer to my question incorrect, or what was the, what was the reason for your?
So Dave Fanzlo, City Planning, I think I heard you say, does the project have to be approved by the Urban Design Review Board?
That was my question.
It does not.
Okay.
So it, it has the MCC overlay on it, which is a never design overlay, zoning overlay. What it'll have to do is have to meet code when it, have to meet the code when it comes in for building permit.
And that, so that's an administrative review then?
Correct. It's part of our building permit review, correct.
Okay. Okay, I think that's all I, I had for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Harding. Councilmember Gray, you're recognized.
Mr. President, first of all, I, I'm not sure that I understood the quest, understood the answer as relates to drainage runoff. I, I just want to hear you say that for me again, because I guess what I really want to hear is, or I guess what really needs to be, that I need to understand is that with this project, it is not going to, will it add to the drainage? Will there be, it'll add to the drainage? It won't.
Ryan Haas with Public Works. It's a city requirement that they provide engineered solutions to ensure that it does not add to what is currently draining off the site as it currently exists.
Okay, so they, they have to, they have to, they have to demonstrate that they, that there will be no significant more runoff?
That's correct.
Okay, Mr. Lake, can I ask you real quick? Has, has your, has your group looked at that at all, and have, do you have a, do you, do you have some response to that at all?
Sure, Jeff Lake, two one zero zero eight Cumberland Drive. Yes, we have had our engineers look at that. It was a conversation a number of times. It was one of the impetus to the removal of the parking lot between Poppleton and the building to provide that additional space, to make that easier to accommodate that, that requirement. So we have looked at it. I don't know the details of that report, exactly, you know, how many cubic feet of water and those items, but I have been assured, the preliminary calculations, we have the size for that. When we go in for our full permitting, we will adhere to that ordinance.
And, and you will have a retention pond? Is that what you?
Mm-hmm, yes. See if I can sift through my pretty exhibits here. Got myself all out of order a little bit.
And, and currently, no retention pond exists?
That's correct. It's just straight runoff from the site. It's, it's vegetated. So here's Poppleton Avenue. Just off the screen is the drainage way that's concerned. There's a large trunk line of, of storm sewer that, that bisects the site right now. That's where the drainage is coming from north of Pacific. Our site will have a separate storm system that goes over top of that, that storm drainage, goes into our pond, this kind of blue area. The water, the, the peak of the water is knocked down to existing conditions, and then that will discharge back into the pipe. So all of our system will be self-contained, will go into our ponds and adhere to that ordinance.
Okay, do you know the depth of what the pond would be?
Not exactly. They're usually, usually in the four, five foot deep range and kind of gentle slopes down into those. We don't want to get caverns where you have unsafe conditions, or you start putting fences around them, things like that.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Fanzlo, if we could for a second, just, you know, we heard some comments about the master plan, and I wanted you to have an opportunity to address that a little bit in terms of the master plan and going from an R four zoning to an R six zoning.
Sure, yeah, again, Dave Fanzlo. So I think what you want me to tell you is, is it master plan compliant?
Yes.
The request, absolutely it is. Our report, our, the report that's in your packet online, available to the public, states that the site is, if rezoned to R six, would be master plan compliant. I have a few things I could show you. So what, what this map shows is, so the center you've heard is a mixed use center, intersection of one hundred and eighty and Pacific.
Correct.
It's a neighborhood mixed use center, which allows up to a certain amount of office and commercial uses. It also allows up to three hundred and fifty multifamily units within a quarter mile, which is the radius that you see on the map, within that radius or adjacent to it. So anything inside that circle could be rezoned to multiple, to allow for multifamily units, or if it's adjacent. And the site is kind of bisected, it's halfway in and halfway out of that quarter mile. So yeah, the, the site, the request to go from R four to R six is master plan compliant.
Okay, thank you. That's all I needed for you.
Sure.
I just wanted to hear your response to that. Just a quick comment. We hire experts or, or people who are knowledgeable in the field to tell this council what we need, what are the best ways to approach a project and how we deal with that project. I think I'm satisfied with the drainage question that you, that, that was proposed. I understand that we are compliant with the city's master plan. The problem about schools and traffic in those schools, I just, I would, I would, I would like for you to ride with me at some point in time while I try to get home when school is, is going on, because I don't know of a school in any area that I'm aware of where there's not going to be significant traffic slowdown or stop, or people who are double parked. There's no way that I can go home and not run into that at some point. So, you know, while I, while I empathize with the, the, the issues that surround, you know, people getting in and out of school, that happens across this city. So, you know, just listening to the experts from our city and recognizing that we have in pretty much every quadrant of the city, issues with schools letting out and people dropping their kids off and so forth, and that traffic being as heavy as it is for about an hour or two after that. We've heard you, we, we spent time hearing you. At this point in time, I think I need to rely on the experts that we have and the knowledge that I have about schools and how they open and close and the problems that we continue to have with those. So at this point in time, if no one has, I'll just make a motion to approve. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. One of the opponents brought up this concept of why, if this wasn't approved back in the late nineties or a long time ago, why is, what's changed through today, and in terms of what you said is the quarter mile of the major intersection and the mixed use and what the regulators allow, either within that or adjacent to it. This would comply with those requirements of the master plan, but there's this overarching thing that I was thinking about as she was speaking, and that is this concept called buildout, and, and what our city is facing, not as a matter of sometime in some amorphous, vague time in the future, but what that concept is and what the timeline is, is that we're estimating.
So are you talking about how much developable ground we have left and how we, how we go about that? Is that what you're asking me?
Right.
Okay. So I, I guess I'll answer your question. Within the Papillion Creek watershed in our jurisdiction, we estimate we have maybe twenty five to thirty years left of land to be developed. So obviously, we take that into consideration when we look at master plans, long range planning, and how we're going to lay out the city and how fast we're going to grow. It all, it all relates to how far we extend sewers and when we do it. So it all kind of plays together. But we try to maximize the ground that we have left and the ground that we've already developed. So as we move further west, the master plan has set up a certain density. This council just passed some ordinances a few months ago that actually increased the density along the state highways, Center Dodge and Maple and two hundred and fourth, because of those transportation corridors and where they're located, they're state highways within our jurisdiction. So we're trying to build density with the ground that has not yet been developed, and kind of as a, a related topic, we're trying to build density, as this council knows, anybody who pays attention, to the developed parts of the city and how we can continue to benefit from the investment, the public improvements that ever have been made in the developed parts of the city. So when opportunities present themselves to redevelop, if we can do that in a responsible and managed way, it's, it's, it's good financial sense for the city.
So in answer to your question, what's changed is, and, and we are looking as stewards of the city and managing the city's resources and being able to plan for the future and being able to continue to provide city resources at the ever increasing cost to do so, must be responsible in our stewardship to support the master plan and its elements. Otherwise, when we reach buildout, we won't have the density available to, to cover the costs for people. And, and what will happen is, is the cost to live here, the taxes would be so high and have to increase exponentially to cover those costs, that'll drive people out of the city, as I see it. And that's why I'd like to think of myself as someone who understands that, and although my own neighborhood, even in Midtown, went through a development recently, almost twice the size of this one, and within a few blocks west of my house, one about, almost three times the size of this one. Is that because we have to, in terms of this master plan, as I see it, support it, to arrive at a place of density in our city along these corridors where the density, in my view, should be located, so that we can continue to generate the tax dollars that we need to provide city services in the long haul? And with buildout of our city so much closer today than it was in the late nineties, to me, it's, we're staring that right in, in the face, up close and personal now. And so I don't want to leave this council the time that I've been blessed to be given not having exercised what I think is good stewardship of that.
Sure. So if I might add, we have to manage the growth of the city not only horizontally, but vertically as well. And we have to continue to think about ways to grow vertically, because eventually, we're going to run out of that horizontal area.
Thank you.
To grow. If I can add one thing?
Yes.
Good call on the masks. Dwight Peterson was a good friend of mine, mother in laws, he was a good guy, so good job.
Thank you. Now, I would be remiss if, if Mr. Matukowitz, if I didn't give you one minute to come up. He, he sent me a special message, and I said no at first, but I would just, did you have something you wanted to leave us with in, in a minute?
I'll give you a minute.
All right.
I didn't hear what?
I'll give you a minute of my request at the time too, so you can have more than one.
Thank you, thank you, and I appreciate it again. Michael Matukowitz, Lycaus and Matukowitz, eighty seven oh one West Dodge Road in Omaha. The, the question that was posed that I didn't quite get in the answer too for Mr. Fanzlo is, we recognize, you saw the picture's worth a thousand words. I mean, that one hundred and eighty of the street backup goes back to the Walgreens, which is just right off of Dodge, right when you turn into Village Point. Same holds too, I showed the pictures going westbound on one hundred and eighty towards Pacific. That was going just off of, I mean, it's getting close to one hundred and sixty eighth, and we all know one hundred and sixty eighth right now is being widened in that area, so that's diverting even more traffic. So why now for this development? Because when will, we, I don't know the timeframe that he said this is going to be widened, and I don't know if I can pose the question, but did you hear that timeframe? I don't think we know.
Well, I'll, I'll respond to that once you're finished with your remarks. I don't want to waste your time.
Okay, thank you, thank you. But again, we don't know when that's going to be widened, so we're going to do the development, yet further increase the congestion in this area. And again, we hear this is master plan compliant when you look at an objective view and the numbers available in the quarter mile radius. But I, I showed to you earlier some of the concepts from the master plan. And again, we talk about, in the city of Omaha- from the master plan. And again, we talk about, in the city of Omaha, must be carefully designed to eliminate land use conflicts, reduce traffic congestion. Well, this certainly isn't reducing traffic congestion. The city should avoid changes in land use that would generate traffic in excess of the design capacity surrounding the streets. But we've already said, this is that capacity. They've acknowledged that. So until that is widened, these streets, 180th and Pacific, this plan is simply not appropriate. And I do understand that you are stewards of the land and have a duty to preserve and protect here. But the fact of the matter is, it's just too dense for this area right now. Once the area is widened and it can accommodate the traffic, that may be a different story. But to conclude, we respectfully request that the ordinance be denied and the zoning request be denied. Thank you.
Thank you. And just if you want to know why, my father-in-law told me last night at my birthday party that he was a foreman of a jury, that in case you tried, and he thought you were a good lawyer. So I wanted to give you a chance to shine, so.
Well, I don't know if I did or not, but I appreciate the comments.
You bet. Thank you. We have a motion. I'll second it. Are there any further lights? Roll call.
Palermo.
Brennan.
Festerson.
Gray.
Harding. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, five to two. Non-action items, items 65 through 97 do not require public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and/or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date the item is expected to appear on agenda for consideration.
Roll call.
Palermo. Brennan. Festerson. Gray. Harding. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Meeting is adjourned at 4:31.